Welcome to our City Commission meeting. We're going to open with a prayer from Reverend Ryan Adams, and then have the pledge led by Jared Jones.
Ladies and gentlemen, I invite you to pray with me. Almighty God, may we as your servants be instruments of peace. Oh Lord, where there is hatred, may we bring love. Where there is offense, may we bring pardon. Where there is discord, may we bring union. Where there is error, may we bring truth. Oh Lord, may we seek to console more than to be consoled. For it is understanding that comes from you, as does love, grace, and mercy. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bernicki.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
We've got the minutes from April 12th. Everyone had a chance to read those. Additions or deletions? Otherwise, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented from April 12th.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from City Commission meeting April 12, 2022.
Second motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Any additions or deletions to the?
Yes, we would ask that five E and five F be postponed to the next meeting.
Okay, do you hear a motion to postpone five E and F till the next meeting?
So approve, Mayor.
I'll second the motion. Is there a particular reason why? Can I ask, or?
We're going to leave it open for applicants.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Can I ask one other? Oh, excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to ask you a question while we're talking about changes, as you mentioned. And please forgive me because I have been out of pocket with a throat this week. On item seven C, we've only had a, we're not ready for a final reading, are we?
Yeah, I'll talk about that, Commissioner.
Okay, will we get there? Okay, thank you.
It's legally ready, but you may want to consider options.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Greg.
I understand you've got some of your brood here today. Do you have your family come up here, please? Family. Doreen Gelder began her career with the City of Panama City on April 30th, 2002, as an accounts payable clerk. She was promoted to accountant in October of 2014. Doreen's years of experience and knowledge of the accounting system made her an excellent candidate to help with the Hurricane Michael recovery. She moved to City Clerk's office as a public assistance grant coordinator in February of 2019. Her key focus was technical assistance to FEMA and state grants during the hurricane recovery. In September of 2021, Doreen was promoted to deputy city clerk and enjoys her new position supporting the city clerk, city commission, and being a main point of contact for the public. Today, we would like to thank Doreen and honor her with this plaque for service to the Panama City community for 20 years. Doreen, thank you. Kathleen Baker here. Come forward. John, don't call me a idiot.
I was going to say an idiot, but this guy's lame, but just.
That's right. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. All Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health. Prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. There are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. With effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment. Now therefore, I, Greg Bernicki, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Panama City, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month throughout the City of Panama City and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps of our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Congratulations. That is so important. Chief? Can you bring up your group? International Firefighters Day was established in 1999 to remember those firefighters worldwide lost in the line of duty protecting the safety of us all. Firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property. Their dedication comes in many forms, whether volunteered or as a professional. In all cases, they risk the ultimate sacrifice for the protection of their community. The personnel of the Panama City Fire and Rescue Department follow a long line of tradition and honor while showing bravery and compassion in carrying out this critical public safety mission and risk injury and exposure to severe hazards when protecting our citizens and their property from harm's way. And furthermore, not hesitation to risk their own lives when called upon to save the lives of others. At a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destruction, fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. The personnel of the Panama City Fire and Rescue Department are vital members of our community with their commitment to continued training, skill enhancement, and numerous community outreach initiatives that work with the citizenry to achieve a safe environment in which to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Greg Bernicki, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Panama City, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2022, as International Firefighters Day throughout the City of Panama City and commend the firefighters of Panama City and those in surrounding communities who, through courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Thank you, gentlemen. What's your name?
What's your name?
The future of travel will be a consistent driver of Florida and Panama City's economy and workforce. A robust, a robust travel industry provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than 2.6 trillion in economic output prior to the pandemic, with 1.2 trillion spent directly by travelers in the U.S. Travel has been the foundation of a healthy workforce. Serving as one of the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 17 million jobs prior to the pandemic and promoting America as a premier destination for global travelers is more important than ever. The future of travel is connecting the U.S. with the global community and safely and securely welcoming international travelers to our community. Leisure travel, while accounts for more than three quarters of all trips taken in the United States as well as Panama City, spurs countless benefits to travelers' creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, relationships, and wellness. Now therefore, I, Greg Bernicki, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Panama City, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2022, as National Travel and Tourism Week throughout the City of Panama City and call upon our citizens to join in this special observance by enjoying all of the special events and sites that draw others to our community. Congratulations. This is Jennifer Vigil. Okay, community announcements. Youth tennis returned to Oakland Terrace April 7th as close to 30 children of all skill levels took to the courts for fitness and fun. Our youth tennis camp takes place Thursdays through May 19th from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. and is open to all youth ages seven to 13. The crew of St. Andrews and the City of Panama City hosted their annual Easter egg hunt out at Oakland Terrace Park, April 16th. Both kids and adults enjoyed games, face painting, arts and crafts, and the course, and of course, hunting for eggs. Calling all teams, Teen Tuesday. Paint Night returns tonight at Panama City Center for the Arts. Join us on the last Tuesday of each month to create step-by-step canvases co-hosted by Palmetto Paint, PC. Admission is free. Fun begins at 6:00. Parents, you are encouraged to participate with your child. Join us on the 5th of May for Family Night, Cinco de Mayo Celebration Oakland Terrace Park from 4:00 to 7:00. Enjoy the festive sounds of an authentic mariachi band, chips and salsa, a hot pepper eating contest, and more. Panama City is teaming up with Legacy Arbor Services to host a free tree care workshop and giveaway on National Arbor Day, April 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon out at Oakland Terrace Clubhouse. This free, three-hour tree care workshop covers a wide range of topics from protecting tree roots to tree planting and tree pruning. In exchange for your attendance in this relevant and important informative workshop, each participant will receive a free seven-gallon winged elm tree. You must register through the Quality of Life Department for this event. May is known nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month. Come out to Daffin Park, May 21st for a family-friendly gathering of resources supporting those affected by substance use and mental health challenges. This event runs from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. and is brought to you by folks over at Bay of Hope. Also on May 21st, join us at Car Gray Park located at Collegiate Drive in Panama City for live music, food, trucks, and fun at the inaugural Test Strong Food Truck Festival. There is no entry fee for this event. 10% of all vendor proceeds go to benefit Mothers Against Drunk Driving of Northwest Florida. Welcome to the Year of the Tiger. Dadra, Panhandle, and the City of Panama City are excited to announce the inaugural Asian American Pacific Islander Festival. Discover Asia Downtown at McKenzie Park, May 21st from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. Explore Asian and Pacific Islander culture with an evening filled with arts and crafts, music and dance, plants, and exotic cuisine. This fun-filled virtual day trip to the Orient is something the whole family is sure to love. Feel like I need a commercial break. Okay, at this time, we'll have audience participation and we have Michelle Clay lined up to speak.
Good morning, Michelle Clay, 803 East 10th Street. So first, kind of piggybacking off what the mayor said about a commercial break, it's been super exciting to see all the events happening here in Bay County. I mean, on May 21st, there's literally like three, four events happening at one time. So that's kudos to the city, quality of life, and just all the great work that you guys are doing to keep the quality of life here in Panama City moving and exciting. I come before the podium today to address something that I came to the podium exactly this time last year, which is the Glenwood Community Center and how, previous to the storm, there was a senior gathering there. While we currently meet at the Oakland Terrace Park, many have stated that they would love to have the option to also be able to have a senior living program at the Glenwood Community Center as well. When I brought this before the city last year, it was told by CRA Director Mike Johnson that they would be in the works and that hopefully in a few months it would be up and running. And again, here we are a year later and it hasn't come up and running yet. And so I just want to bring it before the council again that that would be a great location to have activities, have the seniors be able to come out and mingle, and just get out and enjoy the festivities and learn more about what's going on in the community. That's all I have today, and you guys have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Devin?
Thank you. First, I have commissioners as.
Oh, you didn't sign up? I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
William Swift, 1505 Dunnet Court, Lynn Haven, Florida, Chairman of the Glenwood Working Partnership. All right. I moved to Lynn Haven in 2008. During the course of my early, my early days, it came up that the, that the only school that was available to blacks in this community was about to be dismantled and torn down. Well, the city took it over and put it into the CRA. The CRA in 1992, I understand, was incorporated to handle issues related to Glenwood and related to the Downtown North CRA. Well, I moved here in 2008. We started working as the, with the Glenwood Working Partnership. The Glenwood Working Partnership was incorporated as an advisory committee to the CRA. Okay, I'm looking at, I passed out a, a package there which has my application to replace the CRA Downtown North Program Manager. I've been working for, since 2008, to upgrade the Glenwood community. I've been through, I've been through this for, for years and years. I've had a very tumultuous relationship. The, the advertisement for filling of this job is, I call it a farce because there's no one in, who worked in the CRA that could fill this. There's nobody, Mike Johnson couldn't fill this. Tony Champlain definitely could not fill, fulfill this. So I'm saying that there, there's, you know, we need to get serious about doing some improvement in the Downtown North CRA. And my understanding that is going to expire 1992 and 93 if it hasn't been reauthorized. So there isn't much time left to get things done in the Downtown North CRA.
Devin?
Thank you. First item is the recommendation to approve a settlement agreement with three defendants that were in opioid litigation. It involves CVS Health Corp., Teva, and Allergan Pharmaceutical Companies. These are recommended by your special counsel, Cliff Higbee. The amounts are there, and so the request is to approve these settlement agreements as being consistent with what you had approved as a form agreement months ago that also ratified the execution of, I think, three other prior settlement agreements that the mayor has signed. These will continue to come in. Litigation is ongoing, and as they come in, we're asked to sign and would appreciate your approval.
Your motion on 7A?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move approval of item 7A.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The next items, Mayor, are seven B and seven C, and I'll talk about both of them at the same time with your permission. The first one is, it's an ordinance 3060 for emergency declarations, nuisances, and pop-up events. This is a first reading, so this is not necessarily a public hearing, but if the commission wishes to proceed, this would go to the next meeting for the public hearing and adoption. Seven C is a final, this is a public hearing, and it would be the final reading and could be adopted, but it may be that after you deliberate over seven B, seven C may not be necessary and you may consider a motion to withdraw action at this time on the late-night ordinance. So let me go back to seven B. The ordinance that we have as a first reading is patterned after Florida law and the, what Panama City Beach has done. This is the result of meetings that the mayor and the city manager had with different club owners, with meetings with the police department, with our, our office, City Attorney's Office, have worked with Panama City Beach's office as far as understanding what they did. And there are three things primarily in this ordinance. But it allows for a more tailored declaration of emergency. So, and it vests authority to the mayor or city manager to declare an emergency and actually shut down a business if the circumstances are appropriate. So it's more tailored to a particular business, and it's not a citywide type emergency declaration. It also picks up a provision that Panama City Beach had and one that we had included in the late-night hours ordinance that says that consumption of alcohol in commercial parking places is not allowed. And that's been a problem at the beach where there are congregations indulging in vacant parking lots. So that provision was in the late-night hours, thinking that you didn't know where late-night hours was going, but all agreed that that would be very good to have, so I, we have placed it in, for the first reading in this ordinance. The third thing that's also addressed has to do with pop-up events. These are really special events without permits that pop up. And Panama City Beach had an issue with these, and this is tailored after Panama City Beaches. One issue that has come up has to do, or questions, has to do with the declaration of emergency. What is in this ordinance is, is no different than what is already present in Florida law. In statute 823.05, it says that it lists a variety of things that are declared nuisances. And if two of these nuisance events occur within a six-month period, then the city or county would have the authority to abate the nuisance by taking action against the owners. And that is already, now the, the primary difference between our ordinance and Florida law is that under the statute, you would go to court and actually seek to abate the nuisance. We have a special magistrate provision, so we have in our ordinance that we actually go to our special magistrate for a determination that this is a public nuisance that must be abated. And it, and it's not, a nuisance isn't occurred because you make a call for help to the police department. A nuisance occurs when the owner or the, or the manager or whatever in the business is a part of the problem and knowingly allows criminal activity to go on. And so it's not calls for help that create a nuisance, it's the actual engagement in the nuisance. So that's for your consideration today. Be happy to answer any questions on it. I know that Chief Smith is here to answer questions, and that is, so the first item is just, if you have any questions on the first reading of ordinance 3060, and then depending on that goes, goes, you can consider adopting, not adopting, or simply making a motion to withdraw at this time, the late-night ordinance, because it may be that 3060 takes care of the problem. And the late-night ordinance is more tailored to the hours of two to four.
We had a, a meeting with the chief and several owners. We're fortunate because we have so few of these businesses that are open during that time that we were able to meet with more than a majority of the, of the people that own them. And it was ironic because we had some kind of silliness. I know the one gentleman from the pizza place, you know, like, he didn't fit into that mold, you know, and some of these smaller places. And so we were able to get everyone's perspective. And I think by recrafting the new ordinance, we handle and address the issue much better than the one that we talked about last time. And it was just, you know, applying some common sense, being able to talk to owners. I wasn't surprised about the level of responsibility that everyone was taking for taking care of their business. And I have the confidence that every one of those people is, you know, they dealt with that challenge, and they were just as surprised as we were to have to deal with what they dealt with. But I think this first one that we've got now will give us the authority to be able to have a level of safety that we need to be able to protect our citizens and make sure that we're still business-friendly, but we've got to be prepared.
Greg, thank you for meeting with all of them. I knew that. Okay, so the next one, the, because I was reading over that, and I was like, there are no changes, like, no one heard anything we said. I was like, this is terrible. So this one that we're talking about, if we wanted to can, the original one, we could do that. This is after talking to the business owners, making those changes, not making any knee-jerk reactions. It looks like an excellent, I mean, you did a really good job. You did.
Oh, never.
And that's exactly why I said I was not comfortable with the first time, the first round. And, you know, things have to be tweaked, and you have to communicate.
That was tremendously tweaked, though, so.
Yes. So, other comments?
I think this, I think the new one is much, much better than what we were pursuing. And I think this gives the chief other tools that he needs to be able to address, but he can do it in a manner that doesn't go overarching across the city. And so, you know, I concur. I thank you for bringing to attention that a call for help is not a nuisance. So that's a very important component. And my understanding is this can only last for 72 hours anyway. So that's the maximum that this could be exercised on any given location or business unless the commission comes back and we choose to extend.
Correct.
Is this, are we talking about a permanent year-round, not just in March and April?
Yeah, the, without, could not anticipate where the city commission was heading, but this really does not deal with after-hours from 2 to 4.
Nothing to do with March.
The first ordinance dealt with after-hours. It became evident to those that went to the meeting that after-hours wasn't really the issue. The issue were other things. So that's why, now, the after-hours ordinance could be taken up again at a later time if this doesn't solve the problem.
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, like I was understanding, there was a possibility of it may come here in Panama City area. And by coming out and working together, it lets you know, it could happen to you, whether it was ruled out or ruled in. But I think the chief is doing an outstanding job in combating this. And I see we are coming together more to operate. This is not just one city's activity. This is the whole county coming together. And I think that.
I agree.
Is this the same thing that the county has adopted?
It is very similar to Panama City Beach. Bay County has not adopted that exactly what the beach has. This is very, very close to Panama City Beach.
All right, Devin.
Okay, first reading of ordinance 3060. An ordinance of the city of Panama City, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances to establish a new chapter 25 relating to emergency declarations, providing definitions, providing for declarations of emergency, authorizing measures to address the emergency, providing for the filing, publication, duration, and scope of emergency orders, providing for advanced emergency declaration measures, providing penalties and enforcement, amending chapter 3 of the city's code to include definitions, providing for regulation in commercial parking lots, amending chapter 12 of the city's code to include a nuisance definition, amending chapter 12 to add a new section addressing spontaneous, unpermitted assemblies, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing an immediately effective date. The next item to discuss is action on the late-night ordinance 3059. If they're based upon your prior discussion, it may be appropriate for a motion to withdraw this ordinance for consideration at this time, and then it's off the table. And it can be resurrected if necessary, or if not necessary, then it won't be talked about later.
Motion to withdraw 7C?
I'd like to move a motion to withdraw 7C.
And I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion to withdraw passes 5-0.
Mayor, can, real quick, can I have just a few minutes? I knew you would draw on that, but to kind of speak to the nation.
Come on up.
I don't take a second. This is my first meeting in five years, and I kind of feel.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys, too. I kind of feel so strongly about it that I wanted to show up. And I'm glad to see that everybody's working together. You'll remember, seven or eight years ago, this topic came up, and we voted, we had the same discussions, and we voted not to extend it and kind of follow this. And we really didn't have problems in that vein, but we got a new problem. In preparation for the meeting, I watched the video. It's shocking. It is really shocking. And I don't know where the chief is at.
He's back.
There he is. Unbelievable, okay? In an environment that we live in, for them to take something that was a grenade, where the pin was pulled and already thrown, and diffuse that situation, which could have really quickly turned into something very bad because there's forces out there that are waiting to go after every municipality and every police officer, to vilify them and look for excuses. So one thing I would suggest you consider, that this issue is gone, that we looked at working with the police department to institute, and they're probably already working this, but I'd like to see it financed in a true plan for rapid response, something akin to active shooter response, hurricane response. It's great, you know, Tommy Ford and Chief on the beach, and everybody are working together. It's this intelligence gathering they're doing is at the heart of this and getting in front of it. But it's going to happen to us again. And it's really not related to us, and it's not related to spring break. It's related to where we are politically and socially right now. And we've got to be ready for it because I don't want, of course, see our officers hurt, but I also don't want to see their careers ruined because they tighten handcuffs a little tight. And the carpetbaggers, attorneys are waiting out of town to flow in here and look for these excuses to try to bankrupt our city and ruin our police force. All right? We see it. It's amazing. I'm extremely proud of these guys and these ladies and men that they, how they diffuse this situation. And they've done things that Chicago and New York and Los Angeles haven't been able to do. We've seen it over the past year. So let's get ready for it because it's going to happen again. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jones. And for the record, that's John Katie, if you need his address or anything.
All right. Unfinished business.
All right. 8A, we have final reading of ordinance 3053.1, voluntary annexation of .499 acres of property located at 2908 Tupelo Drive. Background information, the applicant has requested annexation into the city in order to utilize city services. This item was reviewed by the planning board on March 14, 2022. The planning board recommended approval unanimously, and the staff recommendation is to conduct the final reading of annexation.
Okay, your motion?
I would like to move approval.
Second?
And I would like to say something.
Second motion, Mayor.
Okay, say something.
Okay, this kind of borders Josh, Commissioner Street's, in my, our area, very close to it, but it's in Ward 3. And I've had some emails from constituents, good people that live, you know, within a mile of there or so, or maybe closer, I don't know, in the Sweet Bay area. And I want to assure them, see, this is not a development order. This is an annexation. That's all this is. So people are, you know, it's the fear of the unknown. We've always seen that. They get a little scared. And so I want to go on record as saying, you know, when it comes time for a development order, we'll look at it strongly. But there's only a half an acre. And there's really not much you can do on half an acre. Well, I think they were fearful of apartments or something of that nature. And I'm just being as open as I can be and transparent with the 56 emails that I received. So I want my constituents to understand that I.
You sure this is the one you're talking about, because they're just getting.
Nope.
This is.
This is it.
Going to residential, this .499 acres. I understand there may be another one coming down the pipe that's 15 acres for Tupelo that you might be referring to.
But that's not on today.
It's not on today.
For them to forgive me.
I was about to say this is our.
Well, I'm going to say.
They just want to get water into it.
They're just starting way ahead of these people. There you go, Raeder, okay. Jonathan, you can laugh, it's all right.
Public hearing, anyone like to address us on this issue?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, seeing no one, call roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
We have some comments.
Commission has adopted ordinance number 3053.1, an ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of .499 acres of unincorporated property located at 2908 Tupelo Drive, Bay County, Florida, into the city as further defined here and after amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date.
All right. 8B is final reading of ordinance 3053.2, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of residential for the property located at 2908 Tupelo Drive. Background information is the same information as previously stated in annexation agenda requests, and staff recommends approval of the final reading of the ordinance.
Your motion on 3053.2?
I'll make a motion.
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll. Continue the public hearing. Seeing no one?
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3053.2, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at 2908 Tupelo Drive, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date.
Item 8C is final reading of ordinance 3053.3, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect the zoning designation of residential 1, R1, for the property located at 2908 Tupelo Drive. The background information is same information as previously stated in the annexation agenda request, and staff recommendation is to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Your motion on 3053.3?
Move approval.
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll. Still having a public hearing. Everyone like to address us. Go ahead.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3053.3, and ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at 2908 Tupelo Drive, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .499 acres, R1, providing for severability and an effective date.
Item 8D is final reading of ordinance 3054.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of mixed use for the property located at 1817 Beck Avenue. For background information, the applicant has requested the land use and zoning change to develop townhomes, two units on the subject property. The item was reviewed by the planning board on March 14, 2022. The planning board recommended approval unanimously, and staff recommendation is to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue? Seeing no one, your motion on ordinance 3054.1?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has approved ordinance number 3054.1, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at 1817 Beck Avenue, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Item 8E is final reading of ordinance 3054.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect the zoning designation of mixed use 3, MU3, for the property located at 1817 Beck Avenue. Background information is same as previously stated in the future land use amendment agenda request, and staff recommendation is to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Continuing the public hearing. Anyone like to address us on the zoning portion of this issue?
Yes, my name is Pete Cronus, 1811 Beck Avenue. My question is not so much on the zoning, but what happened to the request to amend the setback requirements for this lot? Was that posted at the same time? Was that granted?
I have no idea.
I don't know. Was that on the first reading?
Juwan, our senior planner.
So it's still pending?
Hold on.
We're going to find out.
Hold on, she's coming up here.
We're going to find her.
Good morning. Juwan Haley, Development Services Staff. So the citizen is referring to the variance request that was also on this property. Variance requests in the city of Panama City go to the planning board. They do not go before the city commission, but the planning board did approve the variance request. So that has already been approved by the planning board.
All right.
Well, that would explain what we didn't know.
So where?
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
So it seems to me to be to allow residences or really anything being built on this corner, if you've relaxed the sideyard setback because it's a corner property, makes it all along 19th Avenue, whatever happens here is completely inconsistent with the entire 19th Avenue going west. The setback is going to be way out front. There might be a possibility that obstructs a driver's view. It can't, I mean, I appreciate the need for housing, but I can't understand how both they're relaxing the sideyard setback and allowing building. It seems to me mutually exclusive.
Okay, did you go to the planning board when?
I did, to the first reading. And I said the same thing. In addition, I said that there's no sidewalk. So if you relax the sideyard setback on 19th and allow someone to build closer, there is no sidewalk. There's sidewalk all the way west on 19th. And it seemed to me that in response, or if you do relax the sideyard setback, you should at least require that the builder or the owner of the property put sidewalks. You are coming up to a corner. You have a little thing there with a handicap ramp, goes nowhere. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense if you go out and look at it.
Thank you.
So I had the same concern as Pete did. And so I reached out to the property owner and just said, hey, like, how close are really the buildings coming to the road? And so there will be enough room still to put a sidewalk. They're not going right directly to the road. I think the other important thing to kind of address in this is with our new zoning changes and what we're moving towards with Dover Col neighborhood plans, this is what we're trying to encourage, is for more of the buildings to come closer to the roadway and parking to move further away from the roadway. So it is something we're going to have to manage. But Juwan, if you've got more information that you want to share, I just, that was what the property owner told me. And so I assume that's what you guys looked at and saw there was still room for a sidewalk.
Okay. All right. Your motion on the zoning?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And thank you, Pete, for coming in, keeping that on top of mind because we do need more sidewalks in this community, a lot more.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3054.2, and ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 1817 Beck Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .131 acres, mixed use 3, providing for severability and. mixed use three, providing for severability and effective date.
Item 8F is final reading of ordinance 3055.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of mixed use for the property located at 403 and 405 East Fourth Street. For background information, the applicant has requested a land use and zoning change to develop mixed use three, MU3 units. This item was reviewed by the planning board on March 14th, 2022. The planning board recommended denial unanimously. Department have recommendation is to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to address us on this issue? We got somebody calling.
Waylon Patterson, I live at 450 Masalina Drive. I originally received the letter saying you're 300 feet from this property. So I went to the planning commission meeting, and I'm here before you today. My family chose to live in the Cove subdivision of Panama City because of the peacefulness of this single-family residential area. Adjusting the zoning from single-family residential to multi-use is counter to the current tranquility associated with the Cove and will result in an increase in traffic noise, place additional demand on overloaded utilities, and will compound scarcity of the off-street parking. The zoning request is for a property that formerly contained a single-family residential home. It's R1 zoned. Resoning to allow for multiple residences and/or businesses, multi-use, will result in an increased population density while the Cove area already has an overloaded sewage system. Just up the street from the property is the sewage lift station located beside Highway 98, just east of downtown Panama City. It frequently overflows, mostly following heavy rains. Adjusting this property from a single-family home to multiple apartments or businesses will only compound the overtax sewage problem. Utility system needs to have an increase in capacity before increasing population density. The following pictures illustrate this issue. This is a picture at Business Highway 98, east of downtown, at the head of Masalina Bayou. Sewage coming from the manhole in the street, pushed the manhole cover upside down. With the sidewalk blocked by sewage, pedestrians observed sewage flowing from the manhole in the middle of the street eastbound in the right-hand lane. And it was flowing directly into the storm drain, which goes directly into Masalina Bayou. The second picture shows it flowing into the storm drain there on, at the side of Highway 98, Business 98. And the third picture, I went right before the planning commission, but I checked it yesterday. The manhole beside the street has toilet paper and other residual items that I won't mention, deposited post-sewage overflow events. In the article published 3 November by Panama City Living, Mayor Greg Bernicki stated 70% of the people in Bay County are renters, which is opposite of most communities. The point of the post-hurricane comment amplifies homeownership is the means to have folks vested in our community. In the same article, Bernicki also stated we probably lost 20% of our population, meaning many who were not vested in our community renters departed Panama City as rental rates steeply increased. Longing this rezoning to add more residential property is counter to having folks vested in our community. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ma'am, let me have real quick, I know we don't normally do this, but if Waylon, yeah, he can sit down. But I would like to say something before everybody comes up, just to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing so they don't feel like they were defending something that may not be there and give him maybe the opportunity to come back up if he needs to. I know that's not normal. But what we really need to talk about is the R2 because the developer is willing to do R2. And so that would be different than a lot of these concerns. It doesn't mean it's totally different, but it's different. And right now, they're both zoned R1. It's, I guess somebody illegally put four units at some point as, as you say, units, if you want to call them. But one of those parcels has four one-bedroom things, and then there was a single-family home that was torn down. R2 would allow eight units there. And although we can't ever govern, even if somebody builds a single-family home there, they could rent it, right? So we can't, we can't govern that. But I will say the developer plans to, to sell the units that he's putting on there. But I wanted y'all to make sure when you come up, let's talk about R2. We all agree that MU2 is, is crazy. So if you want to defend that, I think would make, would, would be a better sense. And so I just want you to know you're welcome to come back up. Ms. Waylon, I mean, when you're.
Well, don't they need to, but he needs to reapply for R2.
Well, that, well, Nevin said that, what'd you say, Nevin?
Which time? If the applicant wishes to consider applying for R2, then they would, it'd be nice to hear from the applicant to say that.
He is here.
Okay, and so let's just go down a trail here. If the applicant were to say that after due consideration that the applicant would like R2 rather than the mixed use, then what the city commission could do, if you agreed with that, have a first reading of residential two, R2, because it's not a land use change, it's just a zoning change. And then you could have an adoption hearing next in two weeks. Even though it is a downzoning, I think the most prudent thing to do would be to announce that we are, and hopefully the applicant could say that, announce we're going to R2. That's been the consideration. Then if the commissioner's likes would prefer, then we could have a first reading of R2 and the final adoption, a public hearing in two weeks.
So they don't have to go before the planning commission?
Not on a downzoning.
So with that note, let's hear from Jim, the developer, and then I want to hear from y'all and see.
But it's, they do not have to go. But if the city commission wanted to send them back, that would be more than appropriate. I mean, that's your discretion.
Okay.
Good morning. Good morning, my name is Jim Bichet.
If you raise a mic.
Is that better? My name is Jim Bichet, and thanks for the opportunity. And of course, I couldn't make it to the planning commission myself, but I attended via Zoom, and I came here for the first reading. And, you know, I am quite aware of the concerns of the neighbors, and I actually welcome them. I live in a neighborhood myself, and I would not like, you know, my value, my property value, to go down in any way, shape, or form. Having said that, when we first applied for, we, we don't own the property. Let me just put that out here outright. We are prospective buyers, we're still in escrow. As I mentioned to some of those wonderful neighbors last time when I met a couple of them, we can just walk away from the property, no foul, no harm. We'll keep, we'll keep our friendships and, and so forth and so on. But I do, this is, this is a beautiful piece of land, beautiful location. I think it's a gateway to the, to the downtown area. And we would love to, to make something really beautiful out of it. And if you look up my website, we, we had some, I don't know how, how much updated that is. But we, we've done some really nice developments. Most of them, it's either very close to the water or water view, Class A buildings. And we were able to, 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 to have really good reputation, really good relationships with different cities. Having said that, when I applied, I discussed it with Mr. Lane and a few people in the city and in the community. And I thought, well, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to, to build a high-rise or a mid-rise. We've done mid-rises, but this is not the goal here at all. As a matter of fact, from day one, maybe Juwan can testify to that because she's one of the wonderful people I spoke to a few times. And I took actually her lead on many things. I, I told her, we want to buy, to build single-family homes, and those are for sale, not for rent even. Of course, as Ms. Halagus said, we cannot control if someone would rent it after. You know, it says property can do whatever he wants or she wants to do with it. But our plan is, was never to build an apartment complex, never to build, to put any businesses there. We want to just to put maybe, you know, a few stories, not that, not that high, just, you know, maybe 35 feet high. And just, just to conclude, R2 will be fine with me, perfectly great with us. As a matter of fact, either way, we're not gonna probably surpass that. We were thinking between eight to 10 homes or eight to 12 homes. So seven, eight, nine homes.
Thank you, sir.
Can I get your address for the record, please?
The, for the address of the property is 403.
Your, your address.
And 405 East Fourth Street. My personal address is, I have two addresses, one in California and one in Texas. I'll give you the Texas 17312, East Luara Road in Spring, Texas.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, now.
Okay, so just to frame the issue, we now have a request for R2. Obviously, if you have any questions as far as density that's allowed on R2, you could ask that Juwan, or you could have a first reading, and that would come at the final in two weeks. But obviously, a duplex would be allowed. It's more intense than R1, but it is not MU3.
Yeah, and I don't think he wants to do duplexes. But I do, I don't want to waste his time. He's coming from really far away. I'd rather hear what everybody has to say. And it's just kind of, you know, if it, if it doesn't look like it's gonna work, then it's, you know, let's, let's let him know now. If it does look like it's gonna work and, and they want to work with him, maybe then that's different, so.
Well, we'll hear the, the audience.
Yeah.
Go ahead and get the rest of the audience participation.
John Katie, 513 East Fourth Street. My residence is two doors down from this property, up the street. It's always been a problem property. It's, it's been in need of code enforcement prior to Michael. The buildings were falling down, no action was taken. The home was rented by two sexual predators. And so those buildings being gone have been, have been a blessing for the neighborhood. And we hope to, everybody in the neighborhood hope to clean it up. That, that neighborhood was platted in 1924. It has always been single-family residential. When the Sutter family plotted that, it was anticipated to be that like the rest of the Cove. I don't really see under R2 how you can build more than two units. Maximum density under R2, if I remember, it is 10 units per acre, and it's only a quarter acre. It's two lots that are .137 acres. So you can't really build more than two units. And when you start to look at the impervious area, requirements and the setback requirements, I don't see how to even, how you can even come close to making it work. So that's one issue. When you look at the staff report, when you do these staff reports, you're supposed to consider all the elements of the comp plan, all right? And kind of a little bit of a cop-out is to say everything is de minimis. And I'm assuming it's because of the 10-acre requirement for a small plan amendment. Maybe planning can enlighten me, that's why. But a lot of the things for concurrency in the staff report were just simply dismissed as being de minimis. And I can tell you that just from a transportation element standpoint, all right? Which we have an intermodal requirement, transportation element in our comp plan. One of those is pedestrian traffic. And that's one of the heavily, heaviest pedestrian, pedestrian traffic areas in the city. I know because I look out my window and I see it. The whole pedestrian walkway is in such terrible shape that it's, it's a hazard. Right in front of my house, there's a, there's a three-foot-deep hole that's been there for three years that the city came in after four requests and put particle board down. And I heard a noise in the middle of the night, and somebody driving a bicycle crashed into that hole, all right? And smacked their head. I heard it from inside the house. So, and it's not unique, not only that part in front of my house, that whole area. So just under the transportation element, it fails to meet the concurrency requirements, the intent of the comp plan. In the staff report, the utilities director says it fails to meet the fire flow for that area in their, in their own report. There's not enough water pressure to support any more density on that road. And if you want to come over and take a bath in my bathtub sometime, I'll let you see it, okay? So if you could just indulge me just for a few more minutes, okay? So I think it's appropriate that if they want to make this change in this request, to go back to the planning board, that staff actually do a staff report that evaluates every element of the comp plan for concern, and not say it's just de minimis. Certainly with sewage. It's, it's a perfect opportunity for cities that's just completely aside to acquire that property in order to use it to protect the bay because that's the downflowing area for all the stormwater, and it's under an old system that flows directly into Masalina Bayou. Be a great place for a Baysaver, little pocket park, something like that. It is not a place for 10 houses, all right? It, it just, there's no appetite for it. So I think it is only fair to go back before the planning board and staff sharpen their pencil a little bit on their, on their analysis of, of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, my name's Gary Boyett. I live at 451 Masalina Drive. I've lived there for almost 20 years. It all comes down to, this is a new thing that you just, you just brought up. It seems a blind man could see it, that we need to start over on this deal. I know you've all probably seen the property, and it is definitely not, based on the property on the reading before, that, that you've said there's not even a half acre, and it'd be pointless to build. It's, this is the same thing. It's, it's deja vu all over again. But at any rate, I want to be clear that I'm not against progress. And changing this, this small piece of property from R1 single to R2, to me, it doesn't make any sense. And this is the most sense I've heard on this particular issue. But the planning board was adamant, unanimous, this, it's not worth it, and they all voted against it. So I'm sure we're gonna revisit this issue, and I think that's the most prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyett.
Hello, Melina Weems, 423 Masalina Drive. I'm back again. We are experiencing growth at some shocking rates in Bay County. We have entrusted you guys for our future, and we have shown our desires, and we expect you to adhere to them from our workshops that we've had. We have to consider a worst-case scenario when we look at something like this happening. And in the terms of land use for this property, this proposed change going from R1 to MU3, which is a huge leap. Now you're talking about R2. I'm not prepared to discuss that because it wasn't on our agenda today. And I do think that the applicant should reapply. I think that he should go before the planning board again. The, two weeks ago, we talked about it being inappropriate for our community, the most important thing being the fire flow. I don't know how that's gonna change with an R2 density. We have a process for our progress, or so-called progress. We, I have served myself on numerous committees with the Downtown Improvement Board, Architectural Review Committee. I actually headed the Architectural Commute Committee, which has builders, architects, engineers on it. And there's a process that goes through. And if, if people were going through that process, we probably wouldn't be here with that application. If they went through the process that I sat on those boards and we saw people come before us, this would never have gone this far. It would have stopped at that point. have gone this far. It would have stopped at that point. The renderings that I was shown a couple of weeks ago never would have gone past the Architectural Review Committee for anyone to consider those buildings on that property in this area. The applicant is not required to tell us his definite plans, and at this point, there's no penalty if they lied to us, or if they changed their mind. So setting up either R2 or MU3 or whatever, any change in this, we have to look at all the things that can happen on that property once that zoning is changed. Doesn't matter what they tell us they're gonna do, they can change their mind. The Cove does not need RU3, MU3. I don't know about the R2, but at Fourth Street and Masalena is not an appropriate place for it. There are some places in the Cove that may be more appropriate, but that certainly is not. The, um, let's see. Our growth, how we're gonna grow and what that looks like is certainly on your shoulders, and we do trust you to do that. We have exchanged emails and phone numbers with commissioners and also with the builder, and there's been no communication beyond that. We have attended our workshops. We have gone to great lengths to show you what our vision is of what our community should be. I think that this application should be denied. I think that it should be a reapplied if he continues, wants to continue with this, and then go before the planning board again and give us an opportunity to speak and prepare ourselves as community folks, as the people in your neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for serving. Anybody else? Okay, um, okay, come on, Mr. Henry.
Walter P. Henry, six fourteen May Prairie New. I'm just listening. I have one problem I really want to speak of, and I want to, nobody answering people's question. I know that, I hear them talk about the lift station, the sewer, the water. I think those things y'all saying y'all gonna fix, on the way y'all is telling, that gonna be done. I hope so, and say that it's going to be fixed. The station overflowing probably don't have anything to do with the station itself. Sometime it does, sometime it don't. Station shuts down, pumps get old, don't pump like they did when they were brand-new. Sewer, old, some of it got cogs in it, and water's flowing over sand. I mean, the station would take whatever, don't make no difference. The house, they're going to be built. Station is able to take care of that. But there, in nature, is some of the problem. Storm drains, water getting into this, from the storm drain into the city main. But, you know, it's just a thing that folks need to realize. I answer folks, let them know what's happening. Are you going through these planning things and saying that, well, let them know that this is not the problem. That building a house, whatever you build, that sewer will, that station would take care. If it's operating properly, if it's been taken care of properly, it will handle it. It'll take care. You will have, you will have problems. You will have shutdowns. Nothing you can do with it. It's shut, side is shut down. Somebody go to get there and get it, get something done. But my problem, what I was actually, and I said y'all this just to you before, I don't know why we go through all of this here. I don't know, is the government, or having, having y'all to do this, showing them the planning maps and all of this stuff. I think all that ought to be read together. Take some time, won't, you know, some of this time could be shortened. I don't know who, who do it. I know y'all are authorized to do it. Who authorized you to do it, and the reason that you, you, you have to do it. Don't make any sense to me. It might, but makes sense to you. Do not make any sense to me. If our governor do it, he do everything else. He's signing everything else. Y'all ought to be able to sign a move in this. It don't make any sense to me.
So I just want to follow up. I think that I like what Melina said when she was on my being prepared for R2. So even if I was prepared, or we were prepared, she doesn't feel prepared. But I also want Jim to know, we, I appreciate all the effort that he's had, the developer coming in and doing all that. And if he, if it's up to you, if you want to go back to the planning board and go through the process, it doesn't mean it'll be approved, as you know, ultimately, when it comes down to it. So, and we've had changes of public works directors, like, I don't even know where all this stands right now. So I think that's, I think that's a good idea. I actually thought when we, we left two weeks ago that maybe it was okay, like, the R2 was okay. And then I went out of town to Nashville all last week, and I only reached out to Melina last night because, of course, I threw away my piece of paper that I wrote all the, all the stuff on. So apologies for that. So, listening to what they're saying, I don't want it to go, I don't think it's pretty obvious here. I'll move a motion to also deny or accept the denial, or whatever it is, for the MU3. And then I will, it's certainly your prerogative to go back through the planning process with, with R2, if you want, if you actually want to go through that. Like you said, if you walk away, you do whatever. One thing, the only last thing I'll say is, of course, the fire flow is, that, that is something that, now that we have a new director as well, that we need to, and John, thank you for that input. But if we could, you know, it's gonna be a tough one, just, I'm gonna say with, with the R2, not because of, first of all, I think the size that everybody's talking about, I get missed. Like, on the Bay County side, it says what John's saying, but then when you do the actual measurement of it, apparently it's bigger than what we all think. So I don't know what can and what can't and all of that. But Jim, if you, if, if this piece doesn't work for you, or it's not your, you know, we, I appreciate your work ethic and what you've done, and I would be glad to have R2 mixed-use in downtown if we can, if we can get you anywhere over there, too. But I just want to, I mean, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be a little bit complicated, and up to you, but I just wanted to be upfront about that, so.
Jim, could I add a couple things to that? So, there's been a couple things that have been talked about. I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. So I do enjoy plat work quite a bit. So there are no restrictions on this plat. So should the commission choose to turn it to commercial, that is in full right of, of, of the commission to do so. And so I do want to make sure that's understood, because sometimes there's plats that are, that limit only to residential. This is not one. The second thing is on fire flow. This has come up a few times in multiple developments. In the middle of the city, it is my opinion that developers not responsible for providing accurate fire flow to a residential property. That is ours as a public works team, and ours as having built out a system that we obviously need to improve, and we know that. We need to improve not only just our wastewater treatment process, but also our fire flow, because it's not just this property. Essentially, if we held the line on, hey, fire flow's gotta be at this, there would be no more development inside of the city. And so, and that's not something that's good for the tax base, or helping us actually resolve the issue. So I just wanted to add those two, to try to give some context to why we consider things like this. It's not because we're just, you know, willy-nilly, just thinking like, hey, let's just go develop, 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 develop. It's because it all works together, and some of these things are not, are not all on the developer's responsibility. It's on us as a city staff and as a commission to make sure that we're putting in the infrastructure that it takes to, to, to meet these improvements and future ones as well, so.
Okay, there's a motion to deny. Did I hear a second?
I'll second her motion.
Any other discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Halagus. Do I say yes or no? Motion to deny.
Yes, for denial.
Commissioner Brown.
Motion to deny.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Streep.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero. Motion to deny passes five-zero.
And the mayor, the next item, eight G, does not need to be voted on because the land use change was not approved.
Brandy?
Okay. Item eight H, final reading of ordinance thirty fifty-six point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of mixed-use for the property located at East Eleventh Street, parcel ID number one-six-four-five-four-dash-two-two-zero-dash-zero-one-zero. Background information, the applicant has requested a land use and zoning change to the mixed-use land use category in mixed-use two zoning district. This item was reviewed by the planning board on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The planning board recommended denial unanimously with one abstention. Staff recommendation is to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue?
When they say denial with the extent, what was the, what was the rest of the information?
So someone abstained from voting.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. My name's Michael Mitchell, thirteen oh one Caldwell Drive. I'm here today asking that y'all reconsider the denial of this here, that the board voted against me. The only reason they voted against me because I wasn't able to attend the meeting. I live six hours away currently with a pregnant wife and three kids and wasn't able to come. But I'm here for the last reading and now. And you have two business owners who voted against me. That's the only reason that I've got denied. I wasn't there to, you know, explain my side of it. The reason that they voted against me is that you have one business owner that just really mad because I don't want to sell the property. You know, he tried to lowball me. The other business owner says that I'm gonna be a nuisance or a problem to his business if I change it to residential, which is not true. There's nothing but residential around the whole area. We literally have houses five and ten feet away from the car wash already. Behind me is townhouses to the left. Everything is all residential. I have a point-three acre of property that you can't put a business there. The business, if you keep it commercial and put a business, it's gonna be the same problem that the business owner is trying to deny me for. Why would you put another business right beside houses before they can call the police and, and say, oh, it's too much noise going on, or whatever his excuse was last time. He don't want me to put houses beside his car wash. I, I want to put either the tri-place that Mr. Mike Lane advised me I could put there, or subdivide the property and put two family homes there, which would add more housing, and it would also increase the value of other homes there. So I don't understand why I'm being denied, or why they would want to block this right here when it's clearly helping the community, furthering, you know, people to, you know, have housing. And so I, I just ask that y'all really reconsider, and, um, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Bruce Bush. There is a road called Cursey Avenue that's between my lot and his lot. I own and operate a real estate business and a contracting company. I bought that business four years ago. I have improved that business. I bought a vacant lot right behind it on Cursey Avenue. The previous houses had burnt down, so the city told me, which I believed him, his name's Mike, he's no longer there no more, he said it would be a waste of my time and money to try to convert that land. They converted it to commercial property before I bought it. So he said I couldn't go back to mixed-use or to townhouses, which was fine with me. I just keep it moed and keep it clean. Back to property value. Commercial land with house, townhouses through in the middle, if any one of you had an investment over there, we wouldn't want townhouses in the middle of businesses. Businesses is gonna make less noise and nuisance. I am not the lowballer, but I have offered three times to buy this property. It has been listed for fifteen hundred and thirty-nine days. If somebody wanted it, they could have done bought it. Me and you all know, if something ain't selling, it ain't because of people, it's because of money. So we want our value to stay as good as it can be without devaluing ours, where he's thinking he's gonna increase our value with his nuisance and his noise, which nobody has accused him of that. Nobody said nothing. He was not denied because he wasn't there. He was denied because everybody on that board agreed the same thing. It's been commercial property forever. Why would it go to residential today on a main street with no access to the property? The city owns the ditch, and they won't allow the county to put a driveway there. We just want our value to stay up. Nobody's trying to do nothing wrong. Nobody's trying to say he's doing wrong. We've all offered him money. It's been on the market for four and a half, almost half-years. So nobody has blocked him from doing what he could do other than himself. Now, he just said he lives six hours away. He has no interest in that neighborhood, and he's probably gonna sell it to somebody else out of town that has no interest in that neighborhood. We all live here. We all care.
Sir, can I get your address for the record?
Bruce, give us your address.
Well, the address to the building.
No, no, you're, you're where you live.
Oh, I live seven eleven North Eleventh Street. The building is at twenty-one fifty East Eleventh Street.
Thank you.
But yeah, I live here in town. A voter that knows other voters.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, him vote.
I would like him to know, of course. He can go back to zoning and change it back to, a zoning to put townhouses if he wanted to. Just hope he understands that.
Good. Next.
No. Thank you, Bruce.
Bruce, I did. What I was saying is, I hope you know that if you wanted to change the zoning back to do townhouses, you do have the right to go through that process.
I have the right, but the point was, is he said that it would probably not happen, but I looked out there back.
That's fine.
Just question.
Yes, thank you.
All right. My name's Frederick Mosley. I live at eight oh seven West Street. I, I am the car wash that's on twenty, twenty-two fifty East Eleventh Street. That's the corner of Eleventh Street and Kirksey. That's what he's dealing with. And I would like to voice my opinion about the, the property zoning being changed. Mr. Mitchell has owned this property for many years. He bought it as a commercial, knowingly knowing it's a commercial property. And my concerns with zoning change will, being mixed zone, like a houses and things like that, would probably not work out. I have a car wash, twenty-four-hour car wash. It's gonna be music at times, and police may be called, may not be called. I believe they would rather go somewhere else than to come to my business worrying about some kind of noise ordinance. I also believe that it has the potential to bring my value down on my property. Some people don't think it's worth much, but it is to me. The board recommended to deny it, and it should be denied.
Can I ask you one question, sir? I did not get your, the, the address of your car wash.
The car wash is twenty-two fifty East Eleventh Street.
Twenty-two five oh?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know he said that, but his property that we're talking about has never had an address.
Yeah, I know. It's just a parcel, it's just a parcel number.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're, you're twenty-two fifty.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, the applicant can come back up. Once.
Thank you. Michael Mitchell, again, thirteen oh one Caldwell Drive. I just wanted to rebuttal that. I am from here, born and raised, and just because I moved out of town with my family, and, you know, with a better job and everything, doesn't mean I'm, my roots are not from here. My family, everyone is from here. Everything, I, I born and breed Panama City, Florida. So that there is some other stuff. And also, I've had this property for fourteen years, paying taxes, and no one can tell me when it's time for me to do something with my property. I'm the one that's taking the loss here, if anything. My property value right now is fifty-five thousand dollars, parcel, just plain property. I'm the one that's gonna take the loss by changing it over from commercial down to mixed-use and taking a chance of putting my money on houses that may not sell. Some money may not want, so I'm taking a chance, and they're trying to dictate my pockets and tell me that, oh, I'm not from Panama, or I'm, they're paying taxes. Not, that's bogus. I, what they're trying to do is just really block me from getting in. They've been here getting their money, and now they don't want me to get in. Why can't I have a return on my investment? Because in the end, this is about investment. This is about furthering ourselves, our families. We're trying to, you know, benefit our lives. So why are they stopping me? The board only denied me because of their concerns. That's it. And he's saying that his car wash may be a nuisance to the residents who I put houses there for. What about the other residents that's already there? You have houses literally behind you, five feet, ten feet behind you. You're not worried about them? I've lived, I've lived in that area, you know, and I've actually lived on Cursey Avenue with my grandmother, two houses down from my property. I know about the area. two houses down from my property. I know about the area. The car wash is not needed. No one even goes there. No one uses it. It's in the way. People rather have houses there and that, that car wash has been nothing but trouble. Nothing but trouble. Let's keep it real. I'm from here and ain't nothing but bad things going on around there. So we want to flip this here, change our community, put housing there, get rid of all the negativity and move forward. And I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Okay, no, 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 no. We can't, we don't, we can't have any, only the applicant can come forward again. All right, so there, the planning board recommended denial. So I want to hear.
Yeah, I, I actually really, they, they kind of piqued my interest last time. And so I actually have used the car wash before, just saying. I might be one person that he's making fun of, but I have. I know exactly where this is and I actually went driving around a little bit. And so without any emotional feelings, just listening to what y'all have to say. Typically with real estate, it's, it's commercial that hurts residential. If you have, if you have a bunch of residential and then you allow commercial in there, it can hurt the value of that, depending on what it is. Like if it's Sweet Bay, you know, it's a totally different, well, it's a different thing. It's a quality of life. It's a different thing. So I, and he does have a point. If he are to, if he was to move to commercial to residential, he's actually the one losing value in his property right there on Eleventh Street. The other thing is the, the noise. I drove all around. There are houses everywhere. There is residential everywhere in that area. And you were backed up next to it, all over the place to it. And that's your prerogative to run your car wash, absolutely. But that, that, I'm not saying that we should change this or go against the planning board. I just wanted, these are the things that have been said. And so I just wanted to kind of put that, that I don't think that's gonna affect anything else over there. And if you go down Eleventh Street, there are townhouses right there on Eleventh Street. And there's commercial down Eleventh Street, especially that corridor going down there. About a driveway, I mean, obviously you can't develop anything that would be residential without a driveway. I mean, we even require that for the manufactured homes that we have. So I can't imagine that, but that is not what they're asking today. Today is a zoning change and that would be a land use and how, and the development order and how all that goes. And they would have to meet all the code requirements. So, I mean, I, I found it very interesting when I went over there. I really didn't see the substance. I wish we had notes from the planning board. I know somebody's here, but I'm not gonna call you up here. And I know there's a real estate agent in here that I'm not gonna call up here, that I'd like to call up here. But I, I, I don't understand why it was changed unless it's just because it sits between two commercial. But the reasoning from the two commercial next to it are actually, I just didn't see to be valid. So I don't know. I don't know what I feel about it, but I just don't know.
Well, any other comments?
The only thing I saw is mixed use two allows for commercial as well. So, so even changing the zoning to mixed use two, regardless of what the applicant, you know, chooses to do, mixed use two allows for residential and commercial, whereas commercial only allows commercial.
Right, so it's a lot more flexible.
Yep, so.
So even if he decided not to do residential because it wouldn't allow it in our code with the driving, with the driveway and all that, then he could still do commercial there.
Still do commercial.
I don't know.
The planning board recommended denial. Do you hear motion to go along with the planning board to deny?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to recommend that we go on with the planning board and proceed to go ahead and do a vote. Because now, I'd like to say a little bit more because whenever we first come up and heard this last meeting, it came up with what he wanted to do, the Mr. Gentleman, the famous Mr. Mike Mitchell. Yeah, what he wanted to do. I understood that. But then when he come up and got to Mr. Mosley, okay, when he get to Mr. Mosley, he's gonna defunk Mr. Moses' business in order to give more leeway to what he want. That's not the correct way that we do things here. Now, we have the planning board and the board come up and they make a recommendation. My recommendation that we proceed with the planning board and vote deny.
Your second?
I will second Commissioner Brown's motion.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
I vote yes to deny.
Commissioner Rader?
I vote yes to deny.
Commissioner Street?
No.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes to deny.
Motion passes three to two. Motion to deny passes three to two.
With the denial of the land use change, then there's no, it is moot to consider a zoning change on this particular piece of property and we can move to nine A.
We've got consent agenda. There's only one item. Hear motion?
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second to motion, ma'am.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, item ten A. This is the consideration of approval of the budget amendment for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Resolution number two zero, two two zero, four two six point one for construction improvements of pump station fourteen by Gulf Coast Utility Company in the amount of one million, five hundred forty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The utilities division is requesting this budget amendment for the accounting of task orders for the state revolving fund in the amount of one point five million in the previous number I just mentioned. These were the construction improvements at pump station fourteen. City is planning on using advanced payment for these tasks and thus invoices will be presented to SRF for payment in advance of payment. So this is, this is not voting on the construction contract. This is just the budget resolution.
Hear motion on ten A?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yep.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Devin?
I'd like to read the amendment of, to the budget, the resolution number twenty, twenty-two oh four two six point one. A resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to use the state revolving funds for construction improvements to lift station fourteen.
Item ten B, consideration of approval of the budget amendment for this fiscal year. Resolution number two zero, two two zero, four two six point two for pump station forty-four rehabilitation design by Mott McDonald in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. These funds are for the, the design of pump station forty-four rehab and the work to be completed by the associated task order. Again, this is an advanced payment for SRF. Staff recommends approval.
Hear motion?
State revolving funds, correct.
That's correct.
I, I'd like to move approval, yes.
Second to motion, ma'am.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted resolution twenty, twenty-two oh four two six point two. A resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to use the state revolving funds for lift station forty-four rehabilitation design.
Item ten C, consideration to approve budget amendment resolution two zero, two two zero, four two six point five to utilize privately donated funds from David Costa Enterprises to expand the police department's community relations program in the amount of a thousand dollars. Panama City Police Department was awarded this private donation in support of the department's dedication to serving the community. In alignment with that support, these funds will be utilized by our community relations team to include the purchase of promotional items such as children's badges, small footballs that are given away at venues such as public schools, cops and coffee, national night out and other events to support the department's goals of giving back to the city of Panama City community. Staff recommends approval of the budget resolution.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'd like to think we don't need these, but unfortunately we do. Yes, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted resolution twenty, twenty-two oh four two six point five. A resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget for the acceptance of a donation from David Costa Enterprises to the police department to spend on community policing.
Item ten D, consideration of approval for purchase of six sewage bypass pumps from Marshall Brothers Construction and Engineering in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. At March of twenty-one, the city of Panama City entered into an agreement with Marshall Brothers Construction and Engineering to lease six sewage bypass pumps. And at the end of one year, to either purchase all six pumps for a hundred and seventy-five thousand or to continue leasing them for a second year. The one-year lease term is up and Public Works desires to exercise the option to purchase these six pumps as it fulfills its current needs and is the most fiscally responsible option for the city. Given the amount of now procuring them as city assets, commission approval is required. The supporting fee schedule and information as well as the approval memo from March twenty-one is attached for review. Staff recommends approval.
Motion on ten E?
D.
Ten D, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten E, consideration of approval of Moffett Nickel for architectural and engineering services in the amount of eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for change order number one for additional design work at the St. Andrews Marina Bulkhead Repairs and Utilities Replacement Project. As background information, on November ninth, twenty-twenty-one, the city commission approved the original design award to Moffett Nickel for four hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. That's a recommendation of our, our PMO department and city manager's office to approve this change order.
Hear motion?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten F, consideration of approval for the renewal of city internet services with WOW in the total amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and six dollars and ninety-two cents. The city's IT division in collaboration with purchasing in the city's attorney's office reviewed proposals to provide the city with internet services. Only two internet providers were found to be capable of providing the services required to maintain the data infrastructure for the city. City staff made the decision to renew services with WOW at a yearly cost of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. This will include an increase in the main internet line's capacity from one gig to three gig to meet city expanding IT needs. Both quoted, sorry, both quoted services were competitive in their pricing. However, because of time constraints, additional payroll costs and the loss of existing public IP infrastructure, WOW was the most feasible and cost effective. Staff recommends the, recommends approval for the three-year renewal of city internet services to WOW at a yearly cost of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Hear motion?
Second to, I'll make the motion, ma'am.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
I do want to add something to, we can vote first and then I'll just add something.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
So I have to commend Jared and Manager McQueen. So we had, how many houses? It was about six or seven?
It was eight.
Eight houses in the middle of the city that did not have internet access and they have never had internet access. They have been on satellite on Baker Court. And so working with WOW, at WOW's expense.
Yeah, I could go into that further if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Jared, because it's a great thing.
So I wasn't a part of these contract negotiations. My, my wife works for WOW. I've been working with her on Baker Court for quite some time. WOW picked up that bill to build that entire block for high-speed data, noting that that was the only area in the city that did not have broadband access. That's something I told them that our ARPA dollars could cover. And they decided to build that out on their own, at their own expense, well north of a quarter million dollars, so.
Nice. Amazing.
Thank you.
So great work.
I'll introduce you to my wife and you need to thank her.
What's the barber say? Next?
Ten G, consideration of approval of a renewal agreement for City Works in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. City Works is an integral work order system used by multiple departments in the city. The renewal of City Works is an increase of price for the twenty-twenty renewal from ninety-eight thousand to a hundred and twenty-two thousand this year. During the onboarding of City Works software, the city paid an initial cost for a hundred licenses. The existing City Works user team was excluded from the billing for twenty-twenty-one, causing an increase in licensing from a hundred to two hundred users this year. There's also been a five percent increase on the licensing fees. This has resulted in a total of increase of twenty-four thousand, four hundred for twenty-twenty-two. Staff recommends approval for the renewal of City Works at the new pricing level.
Motion to approve the renewal?
I'd like to move approval.
Second to motion, ma'am.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten H, consideration of approval of professional services contract for urban planning and design with DPZ Co-Design LLC, Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC and Dover Gold and Partners. As background, the city of Panama City, Florida, through the city's purchasing division, solicited qualifications from experienced and qualified planning and design firms to provide continual, continuing professional services for urban planning and design. The scope was to seek professional services on a continuing basis to provide the city the ability to solicit qualifications for future projects directly from approved consultants.
All right, I'll move approval for that.
Okay.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Nothing's paid unless something's done.
Correct.
Just like engineering.
Allows us to issue task orders on demand.
Correct. Okay. Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Consideration of approval of Community Design Block Grant Housing Program Policies and Procedures Manual and accompanying resolution number two zero, two two zero, four two six point four. Panama City is an entitlement community that receives a yearly allocation of CDBG funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to carry out the city's CDBG program. Upon acceptance of each annual grant award, the city contractually agrees to implement the program in accordance with HUD Act of nineteen seventy-four and the related CDBG program regulations as part of federal code. CDBG awards are also subject to uniform administrative standards for federal awards. Panama City provides this manual as a resource for implementing CDBG program projects to ensure funds are used to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environment, principally for persons of low and moderate income. CDBG funds must be used for eligible activities that meet national objectives for the program. Department head of recommendation is to approve the CDBG manual. Staff recommends approval of this manual and authorize the city manager and/or the CDBG department director to make non-substantial changes to the manual as rules and regulations are updated or amended.
Your motion?
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Your second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
I have a question. So this, this one was kind of new knowledge. I talked with Jared and Brandy about this on Monday. So does this mean that we will make changes to our policies or only just as the federal government requires us to make changes to those policies?
So I'm gonna ask Jan to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. This is a, this is a standard operating procedures manual. The item we talked about Monday was the CDBG action plan.
So this is not, these are two separate?
Correct.
Two separate, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, any changes that we make would be in response to either one. Either the federal government, changes in the federal government regulations or if we find something that substantially, that's non-substantial, scribner's error, for example.
Okay.
We would change, we could go ahead and change it.
All right. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Devin?
The commission has adopted resolution twenty, twenty-two oh four two six point four. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Panama City declaring the community development block grant policies and procedures to be adopted.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Have a good rest of your week.